Order the March 25th work session with Park Commission.
Who is leading this?
I agree. So we have four topics that we want to bring up to you guys as your accomplishments of 2024, Tree USA, what we're looking to do in 2025, and then the bigger discussion, the land acquisition, which is the documents in front of you.
Document in front of me, I don't have a document.
Are you hoarding them all?
Oh, I guess I am. I thought there was one. Yeah. I don't even need my computer.
So with that being said, 2024.
Yep. So I'm Carrie. Nice to be here tonight. As far as just an overview of what we've worked on through 2024, we implemented the Adopt a Park program and four parks have been adopted so far. The choice was made to do irrigation at some of the city parks, five of which have been worked on this year. Hayden Hills, the well was drilled. We're waiting for power to be run to the site and the irrigation installation will be started once the frost is gone and the soil conditions are firm. River Hills Park, the well isn't drilled yet. They're waiting for road restrictions to be lifted at the late April, early May, and power still needs to be coordinated. Elsie Stevens, the existed well was upgraded and improved, and they're still needing to confirm if electricity needs to be updated there. Sundance Wood, the irrigation extension power is existing. They're going to do irrigation installation again when the soil is firm. And then Ion Gardens is being hooked to the Midland so full water instead of doing the well. As far as parks go, we've had four parks that we've mainly been focused on, PSA 21, Ion Gardens, and Elsie Stevens. All of them had big bid packages that went out March 3rd. Those bids are due March 27th. They're going to be contracting awards hopefully by April 8th, and then substantial completion should be the goal is November of 2025. Along with Elsie Stevens, they've been working on the bridge and the prep work has been been worked on in April. They're working on the footings to get those installed and they're hoping to complete in early May of this year. And for Leather's Park, they have to redo all of the seeding. The contractor is waiting for the ground temperatures to improve so the best germination can take place, and he's going to be there for the onsite seeding. And we don't have an exact date for that because it all depends on the soil. There's also, we talked about getting restoration and progress signs made and installed so people will actually know that something's happening at that park because...
Is this a reseeding?
Yes, it's a reseeding. The first seeding did not take, and so they're redoing it without any charge to us, but the first didn't take.
Did they say why?
It's so dry and dry condition.
Anything that took was the crap grass.
They did a good job.
And that wasn't even seeded in.
It was volunteer.
And then as far as trails, we had identified many trails, but a lot of them got put on hold to go along with streets that were being redone from the county. But the one that is going forward is a trail along North Diamond Lake Road. It's our last portion to be able to connect all the way down to Elm Creek Park. And so the engineers are working on those documents right now and they're hoping to get bidding out in the spring and then work on it and complete it in 2025. So that's kind of just a quick update of the things that we've been working on this year.
Are we, John, are we getting that right away for that?
Right, I'm sorry, is this right away for?
This is the one north diamond and firewood.
I think we already have it.
No, there's a little...
In between the two houses?
Yeah, we're in conversation with the homeowners about that currently.
If that's completed, then you'll be able to go basically from Elsie Stevens to Coon Rapids Dam.
Because my understanding is that the alternative route, which is not ideal, that there's another homeowner there who's also not wanting to have the trail in front of their house. So not only is the other one ideal, it's also ideal.
Does anybody have anything they want to add to the 24 list with Carrie? Nice work, Carrie. Tree USA, let's go, John. We're excited about this one.
This is an item I had brought to the Parks Commission a little while back and I just, I thought it would be a good opportunity for our community to show passion or preservation of trees. Tree City USA is a designation. It's free, but there are some requirements. I don't have it printed out. I think I've shared that in the past, but it's essentially you make a proclamation that you, you know, an Arbor Day proclamation, you celebrate Arbor Day in some way, shape, or form. You spend $2 per capita on tree-related things, but that could include large equipment, hours, so it's generally not difficult to hit that.
I think we hit that.
Right, easily. And then, and then the final one, or a tree board between, again, we have with Marty's department. And then the final one was a, we already said a proclamation, or ordinance rather. So the ordinance that protects trees, what we have protects them like during redevelopment, but I think the organization, they lay out the specifics and my understanding is that it's already been maybe in front of legal and maybe you guys, but it should need to be a little more broad in the protection or preservation, if you will, of trees. So yeah, that was something I thought would be a good opportunity for the city to explore.
Marty, is that still legal?
Tree ordinance is actually with planning at the moment. We're going to pull that together. I've had attorney look at the second draft of it. And so once that's pulled together with planning, then we'll put it in an ordinance and put it in front of you guys.
What's different about it?
Let's just, you've asked me a question that I'm really not prepared for.
I can get back to you in a minute. It's not, it's nothing crazy, but it's basically the ability for the city to take care of nuisance trees if necessary. You know, if someone has a pest tree or diseased tree that they just won't take care of and it's going to, you know, fall or the disease we're concerned about spread to other trees or something in the area, it gives the city a little more authority or latitude to take action. It's may, not shall, is my understanding, but that was one of the things that wasn't in there currently.
So I guess the question, I think, for the council is whether you have support or reservations about the city going on private property and saying you have to take down your diseased tree.
We decide if it's diseased.
The city would. So, and I would say it's a city arborist, so it is.
So currently what we're doing with residents with the Emerald Ash Borer is we're offering a service where the arborist goes out and checks the trees for residents. We will take out any trees in the right of way, but we're not going on to private property to do any of that removals. If there's a, if it's, you know, a few inches out of the right of way, then we will probably take that, but I'm not going into somebody's backyard to take that tree out. So that's kind of currently how we're managing it.
I've got about 50 of them in my woods that are dead or dying. You can come and get them all if you want. I just cut six of them. It's a big job.
Not only got the right equipment.
We would take them at our cost.
Yep.
Well, then we hit our $2.
Well, what other cities have done, I was speaking with, I think Golden Valley, I was volunteering with tree trusts down there. They like put it against the homeowner's tax for like the 10-year period at the longest. So maybe they charge them, but then they just assess it over time or something. If it comes to that, if the city were to choose to do that.
I don't know what costs to take down a tree, but it depends on the tree.
Well, it depends on the size of the tree and stuff.
Can be a lot.
Do we have a lot of trees in the right of way that do need to come down?
Well, the right way, we can do.
Yeah, we can do those. I mean, we're dealing with those currently. There's a bunch of them in the old village that we're going to have to take down some more mature trees down there on Columbus Street that need to come out because they're just totally diseased and going to come down anyway. So we will take care of those, but I don't, you know, cost-wise, I don't know what that would be.
I just had two of them dropped. It was like 1,800 bucks. They were, they could have went on the house. I didn't feel good about dropping them.
But currently for the, you know, the tree inspection, we're not charging anything for that. I mean...
Well, and it could be a much more expensive thing if we don't do anything about it, right?
And that's the whole point, is to get ahead of it.
Yeah.
And I think one of the things we need to maybe coordinate a bit more is with Three Rivers Park District and their trees and the park that are impacted already, what are they going to do about them? Because I'm not sure what their maintenance program is on the trees in there.
There's thousands of them in there. Probably going to do nothing.
Yeah, but I don't know for sure, and that's a conversation.
There's a way to get ahead of this, this one. And especially Three Rivers isn't. It seems odd. They're not doing anything with their trees?
I mean, they may take them down where, you know, any building they're at, but...
But it depends where they are.
Let nature take its course.
Not in the old woods.
As far as up in front of our houses, I mean, there's thousands of them out there that are dead.
Is there any education happening right now too to let, like, people in the area know, not just about the, like, Emerald Ash Borers and stuff, but the kinds of trees that they should be planting that are more resistant to this kind of stuff?
Well, we did do something on that at last year's open house. We had the arborist out and he had a bunch of information out there. That will be the same thing this year. It could be something that we put in a newsletter or...
The county has a lot of stuff you could probably just reshare to...
Yeah, yeah.
Free tree giveaways and stuff.
So is that kind of an outreach currently? Could we do more? Yeah, I'm sure we could.
Is there any way we could just limit it to the right of way?
We can do it. We're just not doing it.
You should not do anything.
Because right now we can do it right away. Yeah, I mean, it's, Three Rivers isn't concerned. Or maybe they think battle's lost too. I personally think battle was lost years ago.
With Emerald Ash Borer?
Emerald Ash Borer killed every tree.
Yeah, I think it's endemic at this point.
It's not just the ash trees though in Three Rivers. I mean, there's oaks and everything that are bad.
Well, there's some, there's some, not a lot of them, but...
Or the next one to come up that might not be too late to get ahead of.
Well, I do think it's worth a conversation with Three Rivers Park and maybe what it is is more about like thinking about where there might be trees that are worth saving near, like, so not asking them to do the entire park, but like if they are near a private property that does have like a nice stand of trees, it's like, can you at least do these, right? But like if they're across the street from an open farm field, it's not as...
I had exactly that situation here. So we've met with the resident Kevin Folds over, buying nature's cross in there, and his part, his property butts up to the parkland. And so there's a bunch of trees that are infected and coming down, and he's concerned on what they are actually going to do with that. So he's going to reach out to them as well. But I think as a city, it might be some good information for us to how they manage that stuff.
Yeah, and that's where I would put the pressure on. Like, you don't need to do the entire park. That's whatever. But can you focus on the ones that border up against people who have trees that they are trying to save?
How much say do we have in like what is put up in new developments and stuff?
What type of tree?
Right, yeah. A lot, because, so one of the things, I'm in Hayden Hills and they put the exact same oak tree in everybody's front yard and you shouldn't put the same tree right next to each other because then if one gets diseased, they're going to spread so easily. And so I don't know if we're able to like share with development, developers that they should be varying the trees and...
And I think that's all part of the landscape plan that they come in with. And what inevitably happens is they will plant all those trees. It depends what the nursery has got available, and that's why you see all the same trees going in. That's unfortunately the way that that goes. I don't know how much control we have over, you know, that particular situation, whether we can say, well, you can plant that tree, but you can't plant the one next to it. And I don't think we have actually currently got the staff to be able to manage that part of it.
Can we though, in the development agreement, you know, specify that? That, that there needs to be a variety? I mean, we've got a list of approved trees, right?
Yeah.
You have to pick more than one.
We have a landscape plan and, you know, it can be kind of subject to change, but, you know, I said, just doing a better job of reviewing the tree species and going through that. But, you know, we haven't had the staff, so we've had, is there arborists for about a year?
No, not even yet.
There's not a lot of history where you've been able to stand top of it.
Before, we haven't been able to do the landscape inspection properly just because we haven't had staff to do it. We have tried contracting it out before, but that didn't work out so well. So we got behind with those landscape plans. Now we're playing catch-up with that as well, so that's where we're currently at. Hopefully it's going to improve as we go forward here.
Couple of years back, we were behind and everything just fixed a little volume. We were done, got off all months of this building.
One of the many reasons to be a little bit more paced on that.
Going back to the tree ordinance, I guess two questions. One is, is there support in going down to private property to identify trees that are diseased or dead?
Is that, is that what the requirement is, is to proactively seek it out?
There is nothing now, right?
Well, I'm just, I'm looking at like one of the example ordinances and it's, I guess if it's deemed by the director, I maybe didn't interpret it as we are the police of trees to go out and look in your backyard for them. But if a neighbor says, hey, this is diseased, then we can inspect it from... I guess that was more of my interpretation of it.
I don't have any support of telling somebody that they're going to cut a tree down. I'm not there.
I mean, I don't think that we would say that, we would say to them, you know, this tree is diseased or whatever, and give them that information, but we wouldn't dictate that you've got to take that tree down now because it's down to the homeowner.
Anybody would, most, most people would know that because any ash tree now has got half the bark off of it, but the woodpeckers are after it.
But you know, there's still people out there that need to have it confirmed, you know?
There's, I mean, particularly in first-time homebuyers, like if you haven't, like you don't know what you don't know, right? And if you like just came from an apartment situation where you had absolutely nothing to do with it and now all of a sudden you have a yard of trees and you're like, oh, like, it's very possible that they have no clue that they have a diseased tree. So I'm all for education and getting out there, and I have no problem with someone going on to, to look at the trees. I'm not necessarily at cutting them down or forcing them to cut them down, but I have no problem with going on a property to observe the tree.
Is there a cost to having the arborist cut out and...
We do currently charge for that, no.
That's, see, I didn't know that because like, yeah, we would love someone to come check out one of our trees.
This program since we've had the arborist and people are phoning in, and it was something that was offered last year at the open house and some people took a card and, you know, followed up on that, but yeah.
That'd be good to know. Share more.
John, did you have another question or?
Well, it was the first one answered it, so.
All right. So moving on, 2025, Carrie touched on some good things like the bike crossing Ion Park, doing a lot of work at Elsie Stevens. We talked about a shelter area on the north side, so not where the band is or anything like that, along with some freestanding fire pits since Marty's got a whole bunch of wood from taking trees down. And then we all know parking's an issue down there, so talked about expanding the parking on the north side as well.
Come back up, where'll those fire pits go?
They would go next to the shelter area that we were talking about, just little tripod freestanding fire pits.
It's just past where the parking lot is now to the east of that.
Sit around the fire pit, look out on the river.
So on the east, on the east side?
No, that's a...
Oh, you're talking, okay, you're talking, on the east side?
Or like a roast...
On the east side, you know, where the parking lot is currently and where the canoe launch is going to be is to the east of that area there. There's an overlook there already.
Then you meant on the west side of the river?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Oh, I, yeah, you know, you guys always have plenty of wood, right?
All the time.
Although splitting it makes sure it's not green, that's adding work. But it still would be nice though.
And if you're talking ash wood tree, you're going to take all the bark off? Are you guys going to take the bark off too?
Well, we, basically what we do with that stuff, you know, or most of that stuff goes through the wood chipper anyway because you have to cut it down to, you know, two-inch sizes so you kill all the grubs there on the inside of it. So when it's Emerald, when it's ash trees, we don't generally use that for burning. It's not a good plan.
And people wouldn't have to get firewood from there. I mean, there's like five gas stations around.
Yeah, people have got stuff in their yards and stuff like that all over, so yeah.
On the Three Rivers Park, drag it out, Marty.
As long as it's within the same county, I think, you're fine.
So yeah, a nice little shelter area, picnic tables, gathering, that kind of stuff. We did talk extensively about a banned shelter area, but there's just a lot of contingencies and I know not everybody's in favor of it. So our vote as a group was to just buy one of those tents that Marty in his free time can put up when there's people who want to hold a concert. You're welcome, Marty. They're relatively cheap and get the job done. We've rented them before, so we figured that until we get more details on the master plan.
How big a tent is this that we're talking about?
How big a tent do you want? Think like a wedding reception, so whether it's something to fit 120 or... With or without deciding on the event. We just figure if you looked at the cost of building, you know, doing a full build out, it seems to make a lot more sense to just have the rental available when we're renting the space for our wedding. So if people are saying, hey, I want to do my wedding at Elsie Stevens. Okay, well, if you want a regular outdoor setting, we've got room for X amount. If you want to have it be a backup plan depending on weather because we don't know what weather's going to be, here's your different sizes, here's your different models. And do it that way rather than just build a huge shelter for...
How are we going to do it cheaper than a rental place?
And maybe we won't. Maybe we just advise it through, or we rent it ourselves. Say, hey, we can edit it or you can get it on your own, depending on how they want to do it themselves. The big thing was cost, right? We need to expand that area, really make it nice, bring down power, look at the flood point, what type of roof we put on. All of a sudden, we're at half a million dollars. Well, we don't have that kind of money in the budget and it's just buzzing numbers, right?
Or we're literally only going to do that and nothing else.
And the party, some...
There's numbers coming.
There, okay, there's numbers that we're excited to see, but that's just what we thought. But that gives a lot more flexibility to the space because now you're not committed for the whole year. You're just committed for a night or a weekend or whatever it may be. So we thought that that idea seemed to be better than just putting a huge, you know, something that's always going to be there.
Well, and then would it be usable at other parks as well, obviously?
Yeah, wherever Marty wanted to told it. Cover ice skating rink in the winter.
I'm thinking more Metro Tent myself, you know? Get them to stick it up and rent it that way.
Maybe the new events, whatever, the best event place in Minnesota, what are they called? The new winery event place.
Oh, there's, yeah, the...
Off of North River.
Maybe they'll already have one and we can borrow them.
Think of Hills Winery is one.
Yeah, large stuff that's going to have to be acre, so there's...
Concrete footings, you know, a steel I-beam for support.
You're making this idea sound way and way worse.
Anything I can do for you, Marty.
Seems like there ought to be opportunity to, you know, establish a relationship with one of the rental companies to do this, right?
That's kind of what we were thinking.
And it's on the menu of stuff, you know, that you want to rent the park, you want, you want power, you want some firewood, you want, you know, all the things you put on the list. And temp rental could be one of those, but we don't own it and man it and set it up and take it.
They've got a preferred partner just listed and then they can...
Cost we've established with somebody and you can pick it if you want and they'll come out and take care of the setup and tear it down.
Would the city need three vendors though for that to make it correct? Or could we just pick one?
Not for that kind of money.
We currently have a range, well, a relationship with one tent vendor anyway, the Metro Tent who we do the...
Oh, for, yes, that's true. Well, actually, yeah, I don't know that that's...
You're covering up your really...
We don't get it, so you get, city might get a better deal.
And yeah, I mean, I can talk to Sherry down there.
Like I said, on the...
Perfect.
Yeah, actually, I can like that. It seems we have some leverage to get more cheaper rates.
So moving on, irrigation, we talked about, we talked about Tree USA, and then the Arbor Day proclamation for April. We'd like to have that signed, Mr. Mayor, move forward, and I can give you this, you can read it.
We'll disagree with.
Well, Marty, you have a copy of this, right?
I have a copy, yeah.
So Marty will be bringing it to you. And the group here is excited about MSA, having them onboard, 2024. I think I speak for all of us. We were a little bit upset that our certain vendor wasn't around after so many times we talked about the park improvement plan. And then we got the letter from him saying that he was too busy to do anything. Paul. And so we're excited for MSA. No reason to beat that horse, and we're hoping to work with them on other parks.
I'm not sure how that arrangement works, but yeah, I don't disagree. I'm just confused about how that arrangement works.
All right. Go for it, Brad. Last topic.
All right, community park. We could go as far into this as you guys want. However, I would like to start off from the very top and we've spent almost a year and a half, two years now throwing this around. If you guys don't want to have a community park, then we can just stop the conversation now. And that's in my most serious, I could see either way. We're getting prices ranging from anywhere between maybe as low as five or 10 million and maybe it could be 50, 60, 70 million.
Just for the land?
For the land, depending on how it all shakes out and exactly what we decide to do. But again, land would probably be more than five to 20. Building the whole thing out, et cetera, would be maybe 40, 50, whatever it looks like. We've been approached by the CDAA to, so yeah, multiple times to do this, and maybe you guys have as well. And I understand where they're coming from, but there's, again, this can go a ton of different ways. So if you guys want to talk about it, if it's something that you guys want to talk about, great. But I guess the first thing, if you guys do want to talk about it, then would be we really need to focus first on where we would get 50 to 80 acres and is that 20, 30 money, 20, 40 money, 20, you know, what's the, what's it going to cost? And then what's the build out? And then obviously from there, who's funding it? How are we funding it? All those types of conversations. What does it look like? Are we doing exactly what Andrews has done over in Champlin? Are we fine with just telling people, hey, you know, these other places? It really depends on what direction we go. A lot from CDAA was to build something out that looks like Andrews Park. And I don't, I'm, again, all of us are kind of, hey, we see both sides. We really want to make sure that it's something that people... The biggest question mark, and as we've asked multiple times and haven't gotten the answer yet, is like, what is the actual cost? We still haven't gotten that cost nailed down.
I don't know if you're going to because it's going to vary greatly by where that land is.
Right, 100%. And so my whole thing is, well, if there's that much, because there does seem to be a ton of variables in this, is it even worth pursuing? Because it's a lot of time and conversation that keeps going back to it. And are we, where are we actually going to find 50, 80 acres is my initial question. And if we're going to find it and we're going to be able to do it and everyone's going to be able to pay for it, great. But if you look at some of the facts that we've done a little deeper digging, for example, CDAA has told us that Dayton's participation in CDAA has gone up significantly, which makes total sense because we have younger families in Dayton. Guess what, though? CDAA as a whole is not growing right now because the Champlin numbers are going down because you have a lot of people that are 50 to 70, kids are gone, no more kids playing sports. So it doesn't really, you know, their thought process is, hey, we want to make sure that you guys know that Dayton's growing, but ultimately the numbers aren't growing. And I've continued to push back with, well, what about our current fields that aren't being used? And they have different rules because a lot of our fields sit empty, a lot of that are in Dayton, and they could be used. And they said that they have certain expectations of what the field should be and...
Basically another Andrews Park.
What we had suggested is, well, what if you retrofit? If you guys have funding, because they've told us that they have funding to help support this, I go, what if you took the funding to retrofit? And it's not going to be what they want. They want more parking, they want...
They want a brick and mortar. They want it all.
They want all of that, and that's fine. But, you know, me living here and being a sports fan with all of those things, I still don't personally see it just because of everything we have around us and have no problem going to Champlin, going to Maple Grove, going and supporting those other places. That's me personally. I'll support it if... I'll support it if people support it. I'll do all the back work, whatever it is. We never, if we need to do levy, you name it, whatever it needs to be, I'll support it if you guys support it. But we just wanted to get the conversation going with you guys and see what you think. There's a lot here. We've talked a lot. It's, it's a lot. But just like realistically, are we gonna get 50 to 80 acres? What does it look like? How are we gonna do it? Do we want to have, where we're trying to make revenue off of it? You know, what do we want? The concessions, all those different things, right? What do we want it to look like? Do we have people that want to work concessions? Like all those different headaches and obviously more cities sub it out to someone else, but, uh, just wanted to get that on your plate. So it's a lot to digest.
And it's been talked about for years. I mean, the council, even before I started here. So we know it's on everybody's mind, but we're just trying to get real. You know, do we want to go down this venture, spend the time? We'd be excited about it, but there's only a few landowners in Dayton that have 50 to 80 acres. That would be ideal for this. Half of them want the.
The dollars.
Talked to them, C D A A yesterday.
Okay.
So what I, what we planned for staff was keep your eyes open for something that, and if it looks good, then maybe we'll look at it. We had one thing that popped up and it was some god awful lot of money.
Right.
So it was gone. Um, I, I, so I don't see any problem in that. Just keeping our eyes open for something. Um, but yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't know how much of a, I know some people that want it, really want it. And I understand that. It is going to Champlin for soccer or, or, you know, it can be a pain. It's just that is a bold load of money. And so I was looking at the map this morning. I don't know where we're gonna find even 40. You can find 40s, but finding anything above that which seemed to be a criteria up there is, although one of the people said, sent me a message saying that they understand that the 40 maybe aren't gonna do. So, you know, this is a, it is a good sized park.
And this is 38.
Yeah, it's, they want, they want more.
C D A wants more, yes.
They want 60, that's their minimum.
Somewhere along the line, this is where you, this is what you got and if you don't like it.
You're right.
They leave it.
The money we are gonna give to help build things, we're not gonna do that now because that doesn't mirror stipulations. And then we just move on with ourself, which is fine.
Pretty vague about what that actually is. And in terms of purchasing land, it, I don't know. I did read that long tutorial that they sent around how to do city planning. Again, you may want to take a look at that just to refresh yourself. But it, it, it seems like they're more inclined to invest in, you know, dugouts and, uh.
Parks.
Fences and, you know, things that, that, um, kind of the build out of the space versus the space itself. And I think we've been, you know, at least passively looking for as long, even back probably before I was on the Parks Commission. Right? That this has been the idea that we, that we do see the need for this in the future and that when the right opportunity comes along and it hasn't. And so I think, you know, us being a little more aggressive about pursuing it. But it's probably gotta be in 2050 land or we're just never gonna get anywhere on getting a price we can afford.
Is there a appetite? I'm not gonna mention the piece. For about 50 acres in two pieces.
A joint?
20 being across the street, 30 being across the street. It's there, but.
Is it a main road?
Yeah.
How would you give ferry people back in Portland?
They gotta get, you don't gotta carry them enough. The people can walk.
Star roads without crosswalks because the county won't give it to us?
Now that I think about it, 10 years, 15, 20 years from now, that might be a problem.
I'm not saying no. I'm not saying it's not a good idea.
There might be some chunks of property, properties we can combine, but I just know, I looked at the map and it's not gonna be easy. I, I did, uh, we're flying somewhat open 50 acres, but it's on Brockton and I'm pretty sure the C D A A would say not that.
Too far west?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that brings up another point too, is we only ever talk to the C D A A, but we've got three school districts in this town. And we don't even know what the other ones are interested in or want.
We have the program.
I mean, Rogers has their.
Both of them have baseball.
Well, Rogers is building their giant dome or whatever.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a football.
No longer Northern Palms.
Yeah. It's no, yeah, it's no longer a big golf course.
Well, it was a driving range, uh, when I was in high school.
Okay.
And we had a friend that ended up playing on the tour that was golf ball whacker guy essentially. And he, in the first couple of months, took out like four different cars. And their insurance plan wasn't ready for that. And that was part of what started the. Northern Palms, yeah.
Oh, sad. Um, but like, yeah, it's a big, it's a big giant arena that they're building there. But they have their park, um, they're north, let's see here, is that, what's the name of their park in Rogers? Um, that's the one.
By the high school?
Yeah, it's the one my husband and I go to all the time.
Middle school, yeah.
Yeah, North Community Park. Um, and that like, but like that's right, like that's pretty darn close to us. So, yeah, that one. So, um, but yeah, I agree. Like we're not, we have other neighbors.
That's a very important.
We should be talking to them. If nothing else, maybe they'd be willing to chip in, like, no one person is able to chip in enough to actually make this duo. Maybe they'd all be willing to chip in a little bit if it is a shared something, that would be one. Personally, just a hundred percent personally, I have no, I have a dear desire for this. Um, talking to residents, there was some, but like it was nobody's like top, like there were other things that were more important. Uh, this was no one's absolute top thing that was like, uh, you know, because it's not here. Like if you wanted that, there were other cities you could have moved to that have this. You moved to Dayton usually for a reason, in most cases. So.
That's kind of what I think a lot of us moved, or a lot of people I've talked to anyway, who've moved here, moved from the cities and we're used to driving or like taking all.
Everything's done in 20 minutes and that's not the end of the world.
That's not the end of the world.
Interesting part is the, the data they provided us with their athletes.
Yeah.
Is that they are getting plenty of athletes outside of Champlin, Dayton.
Yeah.
Which most of it was Brooklyn Park.
Yeah.
And so if you're gonna tell the people that live in Brooklyn Park, specifically south of 610.
Yeah.
They have to come out to either here, City Hall, we don't have 80 here.
Yeah.
So if we're going over to Brockton, well, now they're, what are we doing?
Yeah.
And so again, I don't mind the idea. I just don't think it's realistic. And that's, like I said, we could spend, we have spent hours and hours and hours. My opinion is just getting the feel from you guys and saying, hey, if someone ever comes up with 50, 80 acres, then we'll talk about it then.
Yes.
In the meantime, pass. That's just kind of what I want to do so we can just move forward unless if you guys felt really strongly differently.
Okay. Yeah. And it would be the same thing. Like if something falls, falls in our lap and maybe there's a landowner who doesn't want development and comes to the city as like, I want to sell my land, but I don't want a sea of subdivisions. What are our options? And we're like, well, actually.
I'll sell it for less because I just want to make sure it's not houses.
Exactly.
Have the name of the park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Name it after you. Like if that happened, great, yay, let's do it. But, um, no, I don't see any reason to actively put anyone's time and energy into this personally.
So if the C D A A, I'm sorry, go. I was gonna say if the C D A A comes back to us and says, hey, you know, what about this land? Where we at? Are we at a point then we can say, well, we want to help you, but we can't do land, but we'd allow you to upgrade our current fields.
Absolutely. All day long. You want to upgrade what we already have.
The question, the, where I kind of struggle is that I don't get, like when I'm literally look at proposals, there's a dollar amount behind it. There's never a dollar amount behind. They kept telling us they could support it, which is great. That sounds great, but what does that mean?
Yeah.
Cause if it's a $15 million cost and you can put in 15,000 a year, we're not talking here.
No.
But if you're saying, hey, we can put in half a million a year over 30 years or whatever it is, okay, well, that's a different conversation. And they had access to different funds and grants and stuff. I'm like, that's great, but what are those?
Yeah.
And since we don't have that information, it's really hard to say yes to something. So then the second time they came back, it was kind of the same thing we said and we're just not getting, we need more concrete stuff to be able to actually make a vote or make a decision on how we feel.
Yeah.
So in my opinion, it's a nice pipe dream. If we get, if some land falls in our lap, we'll, we'll discuss it, but otherwise we're, we're not talking about it.
The one thing they did bring up that I don't know if, I don't think there was any sort of like deadline or it wasn't like a threat or anything like that. But they had said like they might have to consider like charging us outsider prices.
Really pay the mother's fee because it's C Dayton.
Right. And so even though it's the C D A A, so like we've been a part of it for, whatever, but so I don't know if.
So you, you paid 20 bucks extra for your kids' baseball. Like at least you're, only the people that are doing it are the ones paying the money? Rather than taxing all the other people that live in the city that don't want it or weren't.
So the other. Somebody, mom and dad are paying for it or, I mean, you're probably talking five, 600 a year from every household in the city.
Easy. A hundred percent. And that's where like we even said, if you have to raise our rate, we have other options. We have I N, we have different ways. The thing is the C D A is still very cost effective when you compare it to everything else.
Yeah.
I don't think people are gonna bat an eye. And if they do, that's their, that's their thing. This is the same when we got approached by, um, uh, snowmobiles and horse trails. And I was like, I don't want to be a jerk here, but like it's like a 95, five, maybe 90, 10? Like why are we talking about it? Because we should be thinking about the greater, and if the 10% of people here would use it, that's not a good way to use the money.
Yeah.
It's the same thing with the sports thing. Like it'd be a higher percentage, but yet how many of those people are gonna say, hey, I want to pay all these extra taxes to get like, you're not gonna get very, so probably just move on. This, whereas if people say, hey, let's try to connect L C Stevens to Coon Rapids, okay, that sounds cool.
Yeah.
And that seems a little more feasible.
And more people can use that. And you can use that at all stages, like, cause I think with the sports complexes, even if you have kids, it's for this short period of time in your kids. Not even from the moment they're born to the moment they graduate. It's the shorter window. Whereas those parks and the trails, you can use that from the moment your kid is born. You can go for walks and you can use it once your kid is gone. Like it's for everybody all the time.
And it's all certain sports. That's the other part too. It only affects three or four sports. There's all sorts of volleyball, golf, hockey, all these other sports that will never happen, swimming, that will never happen there. So it's like, you're not even getting all of the sports families.
Yeah.
That's why I love the park that's on, um, Fair, Fairfield, whatever the one is that has the pickleball and the volleyball and there's like.
Just back here?
Yeah.
River Hills?
Is that what it is? Okay. But yeah, it's got a variety of things, not just four giant baseball fields and four giant soccer fields.
Right, but these are, but the difference with that is those are for personal use compared to actually being in a organized sport. And so we do have to look at it different for that reason. The other thing is in here, it does talk about the fact that we do receive money from C D A A every year. And so if we don't ever give anything in response, we do have to be aware of the fact that breaking that relationship means we're not going to be receiving.
But we are letting them use our fields currently and we're also letting them talk to us about updating them to whatever standard they need to be.
Right.
So I don't think we're giving them like the, they just want something nicer and we're not gonna fund it is I think we're kind of where we're like.
I just wanted to.
Yeah. No, I agree with you. There could be some pushback on.
20 K a year?
Yeah, sorry, go around there, yeah. But they do also put in funds for improvements like, you know, the dugouts and the scoreboard and, you know, they put in additional funds for that. So their 20 K is basically for field maintenance. Dragging chalk in, mowing, all that stuff.
Sure. So they're getting something.
Which fields do they use currently?
They use, uh, this field back here, the soccer and the Dayton Elementary. They use Rivers Bend, they use W Diamond.
These Rivers Bend a little bit, but not.
They used it a lot last year.
Did they last year? Okay.
They really brought it into their program last year.
Perfect, okay. So I think the main problem they have with Rivers Bend was not enough parking, right? Is that what they said 120?
I think the problem there was it's difficult for people to find and it's in the middle of a neighborhood, so it's not ideal.
But now there's a path from the parking area. Does that help you or something? I don't know.
I didn't think that that was a real thing. That was more of a handicap accessibility to the playground.
So we're still good with passively looking for land?
Sure. If it falls in our lap, we're not gonna beat the door or discuss options, you know?
So, so a question, so a community park, I don't have the slide up. I'm just gonna use round numbers. It's roughly $10 million and we have one. So the idea of is there any support to increase the levy amount that we're, currently it's $150,000 a year towards a land purchase? Is there any interest in increasing that?
Not for me, but.
I think, I think before you started asking.
What, four community parks?
In the comprehensive plan for one, the ultimate build out.
It does seem like, you know, we, I mean, we, I support that plan. And, um, I think that we need to put dates on those things, you know? It's not telling us when we can necessarily acquire because we've not done so well at that. But I think that, you know, we're not gonna buy 160 acres and build our four community parks all, all in one chunk. At what population level should we be starting to hit those, those milestones and make, and make progress along the way? I think we must be at the point where we should have more than one, right? And what's our one, L C Stevens?
Uh, well, Central Park. Half of that is owned by the school district.
Okay. And that makes sense. So a second one that, that sort of caters to the stick and ball kind of sports. I think that not everybody uses every park, but you know, we've through that plan committed to having these kind of facilities over time. And, uh, so I guess for me, I think we continue to look for land and, and, uh, you know, maybe a little more aggressively. I know we've been working through a broker to, you know, try to keep our intent out of it so that the price doesn't immediately double on us. But I don't know how successful we can really be at that when you talk to somebody about, I need your 40 acres and.
I'm not gonna tell you why.
Not building anything out of it, but something's gonna happen here. Regardless, I think it's, it's still, you know, in our best interest to be starting to acquire some of this sooner than later. I think we ought to try to follow the plan. It just doesn't have dates on it like the dating areas do. And maybe we should put a little bit of thought into that.
More of a stage plan on how we develop the park system.
Yeah.
When you say 10 million, John, you're talking about developing the park.
Yes.
You'll never get it done for 10 million bucks. You're talking 30 or 40 for sure.
How long did it take us to get that one? Cause it was 150 a year, wasn't it?
I don't know when we started levying for.
Which one?
The one.
1 million?
Yeah.
I thought we put away like 150 years.
850, I, I, 1.3, but I'm just.
Maybe we could take that money and then escalate finishing out with L C Stevens? So it'd be beautiful and done?
Uh, yeah. Mayor Parks question. We started that in 2018, collecting the money. So. But we started off with a more, a larger dollar amount than 150 right away. I think it was like 300,000 right away and then we slowly brought that down.
That was to get Stevens kicked off. Yeah.
We borrowed against that to get Stevens. Yep.
I certainly wouldn't be willing to up it unless a question went out to people or, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna tax you because we think we're gonna buy land. But you gotta tell them the whole story. You're gonna raise the 150. Just say you raise it to 250. Indirectly, you gotta tell them, hey, 10 years from now, we're gonna be 6, 700. I mean, to me, you gotta tell them the whole story. Do you want, number one, do you want it? I mean, it's not what I want. It's what everybody here wants. If they're willing to pay for it, go for it.
Didn't we find out?
On the survey?
We did find out in the survey that people want.
Yeah, but we didn't put a dollar on it.
We didn't have a dollar on it.
Correct.
Yeah. Everyone wants everything if it's free. Yeah, this is free. I'm like, of course.
Well, the questions were asked as, would you be willing to pay?
Would you be willing to pay?
More.
So we didn't put a dollar on it, but they did say.
But yeah, with least of our, we did put a dollar on it and I think there was a little bit of surprise that people weren't willing to put up there. So I think a park would have the same response. I mean, when I, when I, and I don't know, maybe you guys, you know, can chime in here too, but parks weren't being screened for. Trails?
Yes.
Were.
There was a higher interest though in that kind of community park than there was for parks in general.
I, I think so.
We felt like we have enough parks, build them as the neighborhoods are added.
Yeah.
But there, there was a higher number and I don't remember it off the top of my head toward the community.
Well, in the survey, it was, it was pretty high.
85% of the 400 that were pulled.
But the instant you put a dollar amount on that, you're gonna see it go for you. And, but I would be interested to know what that dollar amount was.
We're doing a, a survey again next year, I think refining that question.
That would be one.
Help us get some direction, you know?
Yep. All right.
That was our four topics?
Oh, cool. Okay.
Do you guys have anything for us? Any other direction you'd like us to go?
I'd say keep up the good work, it's been, um, you know, because not all of us are connected to each commission in the same way and it's nice to get these kind of updates. We ask for them from the other commissions, but you guys have done the best job so far, so.
And I think it'll help too that we finally set up a split on the park money for, you know.
Right.
So now you kind of know how much money you have for certain areas.
Mm-hmm.
That should help a lot because watching the dollars is hard when you're buying place, so.
And FYI, for me personally, I guess, I really hope those bids come, come out way better than what they were before. Because I am, I am not in favor of what they were before.
If we didn't have the lull in progress last year due to the vendor, I'd be interested to see what MSA could come up with for bids for some of that stuff we put out. I don't know if they're going to bid on it or not, but I'd be interested to see what they say.
Yeah, I had a hard time with that one too.
Sorry, picking that horse again.
All right, so are we good? Hey, so we'll be adjourned.